And a moment of.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Wheeler Bowman.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm not going to go back and forward. And I can read. And I saw your spreadsheet that was attached. And the reason I stated I had information to share because there were several discrepancies. And I'm not going to sit up here and debate those right now. The best place to do it or to talk about it is in a COW. And I'm just talking about me because I have the information on everybody's attendance. So, and, you know, everybody has different things going on in their life, whether it's health, whether it's family, or what. That's not my concern. I answer to my constituents. But like I stated, I'll be glad to discuss this and share this information in a COW where it should be done. And I will be voting yes on the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and second on the floor. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please cast your votes. I think all councilmembers have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote.
Mr. Chair, the motion to approval agenda item G2 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. G3. Vice Chair Driscoll.
Thank you, Chair. This new business item requests the withdrawal of the new business item that I first brought forward on December 10, 2020 regarding a discussion on the designation of a Mirror Lake Historic District. Since our last conversation, I have seen the discussions that are going on there. There's a lot of misinformation that's out there. And this was meant to be a very positive thing, but it has actually evolved into a very contentious issue that I don't think is very healthy. And at the end of the day, I want what's best for our city and, of course, for Mirror Lake. And finding the best way to recognize and celebrate the history of that area should be something that involves collaboration and having everyone working together as a community that cares about this area. During our discussion in council on this, we decided to defer the item until October after the plans for the second DCA were determined. And since then, I also noticed we have a committee, the whole meeting coming up concerning eligible properties. And that could play into this particular new business item as well. So we have some very important discussions and decisions that are coming up that will affect this. And rather than keep it hanging out there and, you know, creating all of this angst while we wait until these discussions are had and then possibly go down a road that nobody really wants to go down, I felt that it would be best for us to withdraw the item, have those conversations, get that done, and then reset. I'd like to bring this back maybe with a different look, maybe with some different ideas. I know that everyone received a letter from Preserve the Berg that outlined some different approaches that we could take. And I'm certainly supportive of exploring those different options. And after we have that conversation in October, and we know the fate of the second DCA, I look forward to bringing this back with a different approach. So respectfully, I request this withdrawal. I hope that you'll support this in the spirit of restarting this on a positive note at a later date. With that, I'll move approval.
Second.
You have a motion and second on the floor. Let's hear from the public.
Chair, we have one speaker, Lynn, I believe. Is it Marriage?
Well, I was a former property owner in the Historic District, and I'm very disappointed.
Ma'am, please state your name and address.
Okay. Lynn Murhage, 216 Fourth Street North. I was a former third-generation owner of the Orange Blossom Building. It's been sold. And I have high stakes, like, you know, they talked about the Manhattan Casino. I feel the same way about the Orange Blossom. My grandmother purchased the building. I have a picture of my father on horseback in front of the open-air post office when he was eight years old, and it was a dirt road. So I am very emotional about the fact that perhaps this building will no longer exist, especially since one person owns that whole block now from second to third. And I was not in favor of the sale, but I was kind of forced into it because I'm only one part of about five people. So I'm disappointed. I hope it will come up. I think people that want to opt out, let them opt out. But a building like that, that has so much history, it was built, I mean, in 1926. They served the military. They served food for the soldiers. The bands came, the Festival of States, all the state bands were fed there. And it's been in my family, like I said, for three generations. So I would hate to see them destroy that building. And I have a feeling that the person that bought the whole block, you know, sure, they have that in mind because the development now in St. Pete has just gone haywire. So that's all I have to say.
Okay.
I hope the discussion will continue.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
No, sir.
All right. We'll close the public comments on this item. Councilmember Fig Sanders.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to ask a quick question. So, Councilmember Driscoll, so when you request the removal of the designation, could some of the advocates for the historic preservation actually have specific buildings designated in order to protect them from, as what she just said, the owner buying the whole block if it met the criteria so that they aren't destroyed? Is that something that has been discussed?
Withdrawing this new business item is simply withdrawing, is taking off the table, for now, our discussion on designating Mirror Lake District as a historic district. It doesn't prevent any other historic preservation efforts from starting or continuing or taking place at this time.
Right. I'm aware of that, but that wasn't my question. My question was, has any of those organizations that have been strong advocates that have spoken to you actually thought of that as an option to do them independently versus since now we're going to take the whole area off the table? Had they started or had conversation in applying for specific buildings, like the building that she just spoke about? Had they had those conversations with you?
I have not had any conversations with anyone who was working on a specific building, but that would be a great question for you to ask them.
All right. I can do that. That's your district, but I can do that.
Sure.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice.
Thank you, Chair. I believe we have a COW coming up soon that will be the second part of a long-ago discussion that we started back in the Sunshine Center regarding historic preservation. So when is that coming up?
That's the October.
That's the October. Okay. For that October meeting, and I'm sorry if you had already stated this, Councilmember Driscoll, but I thought it was reasonable, the question that was put to us from Preserve the Berg, to have staff report back to us about some options regarding Mirror Lake. And could we hear that back from staff at that meeting, perhaps? It was about creating a Mirror Lake zoning overlay, new comprehensive plan policies for Mirror Lake, tweaking site plan review criteria, and creating another zoning district, possibly, like we did with the waterfront for DC3.
I see Derek's come up, too.
Hi, Derek.
I know we had a pretty full agenda for the potentially eligible. That is the main item, and it's been a pretty hot-button item, but...
Right. Derek Kilborn, Manager, Urban Planning, Historic Preservation. So that is scheduled for October 26, I believe is the date. And how does correct that that was designed to be potentially eligible list, and that has been deferred several times now because of the COVID situation. And so we really would like to maintain that focus on that date so that we can get some clear direction about what to do with the potentially eligible list, whether that's a full sunset or some alternative replacement. But, you know, we will follow the guidance and direction of City Council. If you would like us to address some of those questions, we can try to bring some answers to that meeting. We were already beginning to prepare a response for the October 14 date. And we had already actually discussed some of these alternatives in our information session on this item that was conducted on June 22. And then, you know, some of these alternatives were briefly touched on in our discussion at the last report item, which was July 14, I believe. So we have already talked about some of these issues, not only with this body in this room, but also in that public information meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll get back to Mr. Belmont and see if we can't capture some of those earlier discussions and get that on the record. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing no further requests to speak, will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please cast your votes. I think all councilmembers have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote.
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve agenda item G3 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll go to G4. And this is my new business item. It's a staff request to respectfully request a referral to the Budget, Finance, and Taxation Committee for an update from procurement on the living wage requirement. I'll entertain a motion to approve this request.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any cards on this item?
Chair, we do not.
Thank you. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please cast your votes. Seeing all present councilmembers have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the vote.
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve agenda item G4 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. G5. Vice Chair Driscoll.
Thank you. This is a new business item that I referred to earlier when we were discussing the renewal of the contract with Big Three Entertainment. And this one is regarding the Center for the Arts Master Plan, respectfully requesting a referral to the Public Services and Infrastructure Committee, a discussion on developing a master plan for the Center of the Arts. This would include, but not be limited to, consideration of current and future needs for the Mahaffey Theater, the Salvador Dali Museum, and the Grand Prix of St. Petersburg. And with that, I'll move approval.
Second.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please cast your votes. I think all councilmembers have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote.
Chair, the motion to approve agenda item G5 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. G6. Vice Chair Driscoll.
Thank you. This is a staff request from the Office of Sustainability and Resiliency, requesting an update in the Health, Energy, Resiliency, and Sustainability Committee from the Office of Sustainability and Resiliency. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any cards on this item?
No, sir, we don't.
Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Councilmembers, please cast your votes. I think all councilmembers have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote.
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve agenda item G6 passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll go next to our public hearings and take up G1. Will the clerk read the title of the ordinances?
Orders number 475-H. An ordinance relating to utility charges, amending Chapter 27, subsection 27-141B of the St. Petersburg City Code, amending the fees for notification of service termination and past due account, providing for severability provisions, providing an explanation of words struck through and underlined, establishing a date to begin, and providing for an effective date. Orders number 476-H. An orange relating to utility rates and charges, amending Chapter 27, subsections 27-141A, 27-142A, 27-144C, 27-146D, 27-283A, 27-284A, and 27-284D of the St. Petersburg City Code, amending base and volume charges for water services, amending wholesale water service charges for the city of Gulfport, amending base and volume charges for irrigation-only accounts, amending monthly charges for commercial water-only accounts, amending base and volume charges for wastewater service, amending wastewater service charges for wholesale customers, providing for severability provisions, providing an explanation of words struck through and underlined, establishing a date to begin calculating new rates for building purposes, and providing for an effective date. Orders number 477-H. An orange relating to utility rates, amending Chapter 27, subsection 405B1 and 2 of the St. Petersburg City Code, amending the stormwater utility fee, amending the tier-rate structure fee for single-family residential parcels, providing for severability provisions, providing an explanation of words struck through and underlined, establishing a date to begin calculating new rates for building purposes, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Orders number 478-H. An orange relating to sanitation rates and charges, amending Chapter 27, section 27-557 of the St. Petersburg City Code, amending rates and charges for sanitation services, providing for severability provisions, providing an explanation of words struck through and underlined, establishing date to begin calculating new rates for building purposes, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. Looks like we have a presentation ready to go.
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Council, Andy Burnham with Stantec. I do have a presentation to orient you, as well as the public, to the proposed ordinances that were just read. The presentation has a lot of material in it. And what I would propose for this evening is to go through it at a summary level and then go to certain slides as needed based upon your discussion or as appropriate. So with that being said, just by way of benefit for the public, the city's rate study process is conducted annually in concert with the budget development process. It really kicks off at the beginning of the year in January, and we start to assimilate fund balance information from the prior year and proposed operating in capital budgets that come before this body via committee of the whole workshops in the springtime, upon which we then use that information to start developing initial rate calculations for consideration that's done at the Budget, Finance, and Taxation Committee. And then we also, this year, instituted a significant marketing and communications plan to try to reach as many members of the community as possible about what's driving the rate changes, the progress on our systems in terms of addressing some of the service needs and infrastructure issues that we've talked about in the past, and to educate them about what's coming in terms of the anticipated rate adjustments to support those continued programs. In August, we, instead of having a second BFNT meeting, we came back and had a committee report in addition to the first reading that happened on August 19. So we've added a few more public-facing communications and a lot more outreach as part of the process this year that we expect to maintain going forward in the future, to, again, to try to educate everyone involved in the decision-making process in understanding the rate changes from year to year. So just a bit of a refresher about last year's rates, or the current rates that are in place today. Each year, as part of the rate study analysis, we look at forecasts that go out two years, actually out 10 years, to reflect the current projections of revenues, expenses, and multi-year capital improvement programs to give us an idea as to the level of increases that we can expect in not only the subsequent year, but also in future years. And as we came out of fiscal year 20, we had some initial rates identified for fiscal year 21. However, in light of the pandemic, we really looked at consideration of the economic impacts of that pandemic to the community and did the best that we could for all the utility systems to work with lower increases in fiscal year 21 than what were previously identified. And that culminated in various operational efficiencies, capital adjustment plan, expenditure timing and changes, but also a conversation about how we funded our capital improvement program for water resources and for stormwater. And to pause the progress to get to an equal balance of funding for the capital improvement program at a 40-60 ratio, where 40% of the capital program was funded with cash and 60% was funded with debt, with the long-term goal being to, at some point, reevaluate in this fiscal year, picking up with that process of trying to get to a balanced capital plan where we're paying for part of it with current-year resources, but part of it that's long-term in nature, paying for it with debt and spreading it over the generations of rate payers that will benefit. And so we came back to that 40-60 or 50-50 cash funding designation as part of this year's rate study process, consistent with what we talked about last year. And so that was an important part of the considerations for this year was evaluating that sustainable capital funding mix, but also taking into account current economic conditions and sustainability while updating our cost information. So we've reflected modifications to the capital improvement program that reflect changes in the procurement policy that are going to allow us to accelerate and to address the capital needs of the system that have been put into the capital improvement program. Staff has looked at various ways to take advantage of low-interest rate environments to advance refund certain debt instruments. Again, another element from finance that was positive is taking into account positive proceeds from the investment policy on the Water Cost Stabilization Fund. So all those opportunities we're taking into account as part of this forecast. But in addition, we had to make sure we considered things that were important to the services, such as equipment and replacement needs for sanitation. It's very much reliant on the fleet, and there's a significant amount of that that has to be addressed in terms of our funding needs. We also have to give consideration to the integration of water resources and stormwater masting planning considerations to make sure that we have those expected outcomes and magnitudes of funding needs programmed into our forecast to make sure that we have sustainable funding for the identified needs for the community over the next five and 10 years, and to continue the progress that we've been on relative to our infrastructure. So what's being proposed for fiscal year 22 is, again, making sure that we have a balanced approach of current economic conditions, giving the continued impacts of the pandemic, but long-term sustainability in mind. And so the results, as you can see, for each of the different utility services are increases that are the same as projected from last year or less. In the particular case for stormwater, the increase was a bit lower, as is for sanitation, but staying consistent with our plans for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water for fiscal year 22. So generally speaking, for most bills within the community, the increases this year are less than anticipated by anywhere from about 50 cents to a dollar. But each of these increases are very necessary to continue with infrastructure. For water, we have about 1,500 miles of distribution system that runs from here to Montreal, Canada, if you were to lay it from end to end. And we need to continue to invest in that underground infrastructure for the water system. For wastewater, we've made good progress. Over the past few years, we've reduced INI in the system from fiscal 17 to 20 by 20%. That's positive progress. And we've relined or rehabbed about 110, 115 miles of the pipe, but we still have a long ways to go. There's about 1,000 miles of linear feet of, or 1,000 miles of sewer collection system assets that have to be replaced and addressed as well. Reclaimed water is still consistent with past policy directives to achieve an 80% cost recovery target, recognizing the cost of the systems, but the benefits to avoided water supply cost on the water side and avoiding alternative costs of disposal on the wastewater side. In stormwater, we're continuing to ramp up the capital plans, consistent with the expected outcomes from the master plan. And we need to continue on that trajectory to go from what was a few million dollars a year of capital spending to what's anticipated to be about 30 million per year. And for the sanitation system, we need to continue with increases. But in this case, sanitation's done a good job on controlling cost. You know, a great example of that is the CNG fleet conversion that's really helped achieve fuel cost savings. And so the increase for sanitation this year is notably lower than what was identified from last year's study. So what this means for typical customers in the community, the vast majority of your customer base have water, wastewater, stormwater, as well as sanitation services. And so that's that first subtotal on this chart. When you add up that typical bill for a residential customer that uses about 4,000 gallons of water a month, and if they're in Tier 1 for the stormwater system where they have less than 1,600 square feet of impervious area, that overall bill increase on a monthly basis will be $6.61%, or about 5.5%. About 12% of your customer base has reclaimed water available. And since there's no change in that fee, the dollar change in the bill is still the same. It's still $6.61 for those customers that have reclaimed water. And the percentage would be 4.4% for those portions of your customer base that are, use a typical amount of water and are in Tier 1 for stormwater billing. For customers that are in Tier 2, which is the vast majority of the residential customer base, over 50% of the customers are in Tier 2, again, we've identified the change in cost for the monthly services. So on the utility bill, that would be an increase of about $7.48, or just under 6% in for customers that are in Tier 2 and also have reclaimed water service. It's still the same dollar increase, but it's a little under 5% as the overall increase in the utility bill. Customers that are in Tier 3, you can see the dollar increase would be $8.48, or about 6.47%. It's important to note, we've got over 2/3 of our customers in Tiers 1 and Tier 2. So not many customers are in the Tier 3 and Tier 4 for the stormwater charges. And as we look at Tier 4 for that bill, that would be $9.83, or about 7%. So generalizing or encapsulating this range of impacts, we're expecting about a 5% to 6%, or 5% to 7% increase on the typical utility bill for customers going into next year. That will vary depending upon how much water they use, whether they have reclaimed water service, and what tier they're in for stormwater. But this gives you an idea of those range of impacts. And as I mentioned, we have included a significant amount of material in the presentation for backup purposes that we can refer to. One item that I do want to mention that's part of the ordinances that are before you today is a change based on a PSNI committee recommendation relative to the implication of a $4 fee at notice of past due as opposed to having an $8 fee at notice of termination. The costs are really being incurred at even issuing that notice of past due amount. So it's a minor change to the ordinance to reflect breaking up that $8 fee to have $4 at notice of past due and another $4 at notice of termination. So with that, that's, I think, a pretty comprehensive summary of the rate study this year, a lot of the things that we've considered, and what we need to continue to consider relative to balancing affordability but sustainability for the infrastructure going forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or similarly pull up some other content in response to any items of your interest.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, Andy. We're going to go to the public. But before we start calling on the public, so you threw out a couple terms that people might not be familiar with, INI. Explain what INI is. And when you talk about CNG, can you explain?
Sure. So when we refer to INI, that's really inflow and infiltration. So that's basically groundwater or rainwater that's coming into the wastewater system and coming back to our treatment plants. That's over and above what's coming from individual homes and businesses from return for use of water in those homes and businesses.
Okay.
And then the CNG process, that's really referring to the use of natural gas as part of fueling for vehicles as opposed to typical fuel that you would purchase at the pump, say, a diesel product.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for those explanations. Let's hear from the public next.
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker who wants to speak regarding agenda item J1C, the stormwater rates. You want to have him speak now?
Yes.
Okay. I believe, is it Fred Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder, once you go to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address City Council.
My name is Fred Ryder. I'm at 340 14th Avenue Northeast. So I'm in, really, in the old Northeast section. And I have some photos. And so my concern is the drainage in our area. I noticed over the many years, and I've been there for, oh, since 1990, so it's been close to 40, 30, 40 years. And the location of 14th Avenue and Locust, the water does not drain there. In fact, it moves along down to 15th where it finds a drain. And this drain hasn't worked in a long time. In fact, the city's been out there many times. I called the mayor's action line to take care of that back in, as you see, it's 2019. me, 2019. So, that's a problem with that intersection. Moving along to Grim 2 on the green letters, green Post-its. The water comes down Locust, and then it turns and goes north on Locust, excuse me, comes down 9th Avenue, goes north on Locust, then it continues to 10th Avenue. Now, this is really the strange portion of this whole drainage area, because what happens is, with the water coming down Locust and 10th Avenue there, it literally goes under Locust. Now, what happens when it goes under Locust? Well, the big surprise is, it comes up out of the next drain across the street on 10th and moves along 10th to where it finds a drain. The problem in this area is just not enough drains. And so, on the red letters on the top of the left-hand corner, you'll see a number 3. And there are some that are different, same photo of different angles. So, it continues on down to the, into the street where it does find a drain, and that is number 4. So, also, what happens is, down 10th, it, oh, excuse me, over on 11th, it continues down from Locust and goes down 11th Avenue, and that is in Group 3, number 5. Now, here it collects, and we commonly call this Lake Cherry, because it's on Cherry and 11th. And it sits there for a long time. Now, only while the water level is high enough to overcome the derivations and unevenness of the roads, it continues down beach, but only until, but only at the proper.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll go and close the.
Dana, would you let me?
We'll close the public hearing. So, do we, can we take these ordinances up all at once?
Mr. Chair, I would suggest a vote. It was fine to read them all together, but I would vote on each of them separately.
Okay. All right. Very good. I'll go ahead and ask just a couple questions. Mr. Tankersley was here. There he is.
So, in response to some of the questions of, that we heard from the public, can you talk a little bit about the stormwater master plan, why we have one, how is it going to address some of these drainage issues that we have in our city?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And if I could also get a copy of the photos, I think that would help us out.
Okay.
So, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, we are working on a overall city stormwater master plan, because we recognize that there's a lot of needs throughout the entire city. You know, we sometimes may forget how big the city is. It's, we got tens of thousands of intersections, and each one of those is likely to have some kind of drainage issue. So, rather than trying to attack these without a plan, and recognizing that having a stormwater master plan will allow us to apply for grant funding to help pay for some of the projects, and also could potentially also help us with our CSR rating, we pursued the plan, and what we're doing is we're modeling, we took the survey data of the entire city, we're modeling the entire city to determine how the stormwater system currently works, and then we're looking to see what needs to be done to bring it up to the current conditions we have now, but also, we're looking at future conditions, because we've recognized that conditions are changing. New buildings are coming in, streets are being changed, the weather patterns are changing, sea level rise, there's a lot of things that are changing over time. And it's prudent for us, when we make these changes to our stormwater or the other utility systems, to make them anticipating the length of the life of the system, so 50 years or so. So, we're looking at what kind of changes we may need to adjust in order to handle those future conditions. This is a big project. It's taking some time, because we are looking for grant funding for part of the project. We are working and cooperating with SWIFTMUD, and we have to meet some of their requirements. And so, we don't anticipate having the plan completed until 2022. But we do have an initial estimate, what we think that the plan is going to come back saying that over a 20-year period, we're guessing it's going to be around $600 million, possibly more, over a 20-year period to tackle all the drainage issues throughout the city.
Can you discuss, so we have the plan going on.
Yes, sir.
And I know we have a lot of projects, ongoing projects going on. Are you aware of any of the work in Old Northeast in these intersections that we're pointing out to us?
Yes, yes. We're very aware of Old Northeast. I had to chuckle about the Lake Cherry. I know it's not a pleasant thing, but I heard that. So, we are aware of it. Some of the challenges of the Old Northeast is the fact that there is not enough stormwater infrastructure there. We are aware of that. And then, with the condition of the streets, with the streets being brick streets and the high groundwater, the streets themselves, you know, will create ruts, which holds water. We're very aware that the Old Northeast is going to be one of the areas in the city that is going to have some impact from this plan. Other areas, of course, would be around Lake Magore and up in the Riviera Bay, and there's other coastal areas of the city. There's quite a few areas of the cities that we're already aware that, and we anticipate this plan identifying projects in those areas probably in the early part of that 20-year planning period, rather than the later part.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. The other thing I wanted just to talk about before we vote on this, these ordinances, and I don't know, Claude, if you want to address this, or if Andy wants to address it, but can you talk a little bit about the 50/50 funding? Because it wasn't too long ago that we were only, we were only spending about, we're at 10% of our funding, and we're pushing off 90% of the cost of the improvements to our utility to future generations. So, can you talk about the generational equity that we're trying to achieve, which is driving rates up at a faster rate than people are aware of?
Sure. I'd be happy to. I think your history is pretty accurate relative to historical funding practices at the city for water resources, infrastructure. It was actually less than 10% was being funded with cash resources, which means for every capital improvement we were making, we were debt funding it. And so, that means we're carrying principal and interest on that debt, and for a long period of time, it was being backloaded, trying to defer a lot of the repayment of the principal. So, the amount of outstanding debt started to really accumulate for the utility, and the rating agencies and others were starting to point to that as a potential concern for long-term sustainability. And so, in response to that, and trying to have a more balanced model, where recurring capital needs that we have to spend each year, we really shouldn't be borrowing for those. It's kind of like borrowing for your groceries each week. We really, for those that are annual renewals and replacements, to be, that are more programmatic in nature, we really should be cash funding those. But then, investments in longer-term assets that are a complete rehabilitation or replacement of a major pump station, or a big improvement at the treatment plants that's going to last 20 or 30 years, those are the sorts of things that are appropriate for debt financing, so that you can then spread the cost of those out over the generations or years of its useful life, so that the people that are here benefiting from that asset being in service will pay their share of it while it's in use. And so, it's really trying to have that balanced model of intergenerational equity, where the things that are recurring in nature, we're paying for what we need to each year, we're not deferring those on future generations. And similarly, for long-lived assets that are going to benefit future generations, we spread those costs out appropriately and use debt financing for those. And so, that's really been the fundamental tenets behind the 50/50 policy, is to have that balanced equity. But to get there, we have to have higher near-term increases, so we can start paying for that recurring portion with our cash resources. But in the long term, we start saving on interest expenses. And so, just moving from what was 10% to the 40% level that we're at today, just based on the prior 10-year CIP, just let alone future capital beyond that, that avoided about $500 million of interest and 27% of future rate increases. And so, that next step, going from 40% to 50%, is going to similarly avoid, based on the current 10-year CIP, about $80 million of interest expenses, and save us about 5% in rate increases over the long term. So, this does have a benefit to the system, and it's been a challenge to progress from what was less than 10% to 50/50. And so, we've been trying to be very balanced and thoughtful in that approach, in terms of the recommendations to you to achieve that, really, a sustainable outcome.
Well, thank you very much for that explanation. And it's just one thing that I wanted to point out to the public, because we hear a lot from the public, nobody likes to see these rate increases, but there's a couple different things that are, that have been going on, and some of them have been just good policy set from this City Council and the administration when it comes to how do we finance the capital needs for the utility.
I'd agree.
Yeah. So, thank you. Well, seeing no other requests to speak, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on.
J1A.
J1A.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting?
Hold on, Mr. Chair.
Council members, please cast your votes. I think all council members have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve Agenda Item J1A passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. J1B. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve J1B. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting?
Counselor Member Foster.
Uh-uh.
Vice Chair Driscoll. Council members, please cast your votes. I think all council members have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve Agenda Item J1B passes unanimously.
Thank you. J1C.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve J1C. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Council members, please cast your votes. I think all council members have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve Agenda Item J1C passes unanimously.
Thank you. J1D.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Council members, please cast your votes. I think all council members have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve Agenda Item J1D passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Entertain a motion on J2.
We need to read the title, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What's that?
We need to read the title for J2.
I thought, I thought we already did.
No, sir. We didn't.
Okay. Read the title to.
Order number 479-H, an ordinance of the city of St. Petersburg, Florida, amending Section 16.80 of the city code related to administrative agencies, clarifying that its Development Review Commission and Community Planning and Preservation Commission function as design review board, providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and we do not have any cards. Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Do you have a presentation on that?
Yes.
I don't know which one.
You say we did not have any cards on this item?
We do not have any cards, sir.
Will the clerk please open the machine for voting?
Do you have a presentation on that?
Council members, please cast your votes. I think all council members have voted. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve Agenda Item J2 passes unanimously.
Okay. Next to J3.
Order number 480-H, an ordinance of the city of St. Petersburg, Florida, amending its comprehensive plan, adding a new Chapter 15 property rights element, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. The public hearing for this item is October the 14th.
Okay.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to conduct first reading on J3. Will the, do we have, we say, did you say we did not have any cards?
We do not have any cards, sir.
There are no cards. And Mr. Chair, just declared this is first reading and first public hearing.
Say that again.
This is first reading and first public hearing for this item.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Will the clerk please enter, open the machine for voting?
Mr. Chair, is that?
Can we do A and B together?
Yeah. You can do A and B together for that one, if you'd like.
Sure.
Do I need to restate my motion to clarify?
That would be good.
Move approval of Item J3A and J3B.
Ms. Mayor McGabbard.
Second.
Motion to approve J3A and J3B. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Council members, please cast your votes. Council Member Foster, Council Member Wheeler Bowman, thank you. Will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve Agenda Items J3A and B passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. J4.
Order number 481-H, an ordinance of the city of St. Petersburg, Florida, amending its comprehensive plan, amending objective LU3 of the future land use element to preclude applications of the comprehensive plan to certain affordable housing projects, approved pursuant to Section 166.041516 Florida statutes, creating a new objective H1B in the housing element, directing the city to create a process for consideration of affordable housing projects pursuant to Section 166.041516 Florida statutes, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. The public hearing for this item is October the 14th, and we do have a card.
We do have cards on this one, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Gertis.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, City Council members. Rob Gertis, Neighborhood Affairs Administrator. I'm before you this afternoon about creating a new process to expand potential land sites for housing affordability, with provisions for compatibility and protecting industrial employment. The item that you're currently hearing is Item J4. However, there's two other items on the agenda that are inextricably linked to this. Those are Items E4. So, this presentation is going to cover both J4 and E4, and I'll be happy to take questions on either item after the presentation. So, the impetus for the creation of this new process was an item in House Bill 1339, which passed in 2020. And that item in that bill said that notwithstanding any other local law ordinance, to the contrary, the governing body of a municipality, which is City Council, may approve the development of housing that is affordable as defined in Statute 420.004 on any parcel zone for residential, commercial or industrial use. And in that section of state statute where it talks about the definition of affordability, essentially what it says is dwelling units at 120% AMI households and below. The purpose of the ordinance is, before you this evening, is to create a new process in Chapter 17.5, where an applicant could apply through staff directly to City Council for consideration of an affordable housing development that would otherwise not be permitted in the neighborhood suburban, neighborhood traditional, industrial suburban and industrial traditional zoning districts. So, although the state statute talks about residential, commercial or industrial zoning districts, for the purposes of the ordinances before you, the city is focused on four zoning districts. That's the NS, the neighborhood suburban, NT, neighborhood traditional, which are single-family zoning districts, the industrial suburban and the industrial traditional. So, Item J4, the item that you have before you right now, is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. There's also a res- also a resolution attached that would transmit that amendment for review by the state, regional, and county review agencies. This is that proposed ordinance, and what it does is it makes a change to objective LU3 in the comprehensive plan. You can see the change here underlined. And basically what it says is that this new process that we're creating is not subject to this objective LU3 in the comprehensive plan. It is apart from that. So we're just putting this note in the comprehensive plan to make the community aware of that. There's also a new objective H1.B., which says that the city shall create a process for consideration of affordable housing pursuant to this new state statute, and that's exactly what we're here doing this afternoon. In item E-4, there's two ordinances. One is an ordinance to chapter 16 of the city code. The other is the ordinance in chapter 17.5, which would actually create this new process. Here's the ordinance change in chapter 16. It's basically the same as the comprehensive plan change, it's just a signpost saying that this new process is not part of chapter 16 or subject to chapter 16. And then there is a new ordinance in chapter 17.5, which is really the heart of the matter this evening from my perspective. And what this ordinance does is create this new process. And I think the intent and purpose section here is important, and it identifies that housing affordability continues to be an issue, and that there are certain circumstances where the land development regulations as they exist could be an impediment to affordable housing. And it creates this new process to consider land in the NS, NT, IT, and IS zoning districts. And it says that in this process, that applications that come forward should meet the standards for review and be compatible with the development within the neighborhood. And that's the purpose of intent of this new ordinance. So I'm going to go ahead and walk you through the ordinance and what it would do. So there is minimum locational density affordability, property size criteria. The developer would have to meet this minimum criteria to even come forward with an application that would go forward to city council. In the NT and NS zoning districts, that would be a minimum of one acre in size, a minimum of 20 units, maximum rent or for sale price point at 120% AMI or below for all the units, and a minimum affordability period of 30 years. In IT and IS, the minimum acreage size goes up to five acres, minimum units are 60. Then there's some locational criteria related to distance from public or vocational schools, PSTA bus lines, grocery store, Pinellas Trail or city park, and then the same rental or sale price points and affordability period. So if a developer met those basic criteria in those zoning districts, they could come forward with an application. The application review process is very similar to the current site plan review process. There would be a pre-application conference with the developer, there would be a determination of completeness. Once staff determines that the application is complete, they would prepare a staff report that would be brought to city council, and city council would be the decision-makers on the application. There's the same public notice requirements that you would have for a site plan or a special exception, same types of rehearing provisions. These are all basically taken directly from the site plan review and special exception criteria. Something a little different here in the procedure sections related to the industrial zoning is if the property is located in an industrial zone, there would have to be an environmental report for the specific property to make sure that there's no environmental issues with putting residential on the property, and an analysis of the surrounding industrial activities. Also, if the redevelopment would displace an existing business, a plan for relocation of the business or reemployment of existing employees would be part of the application process. There would be no fee for this application. And just as kind of a side note, a developer would typically have to go through a rezoning or change of future land use to try and develop on one of these properties. That can cost a developer somewhere in the proximity of $4,000. So there is a significant cost savings to an affordable housing developer with this process, just in fees. Okay, so staff would review the application based on the standards for review, and then city council would do that as well. And the standards of review are here before you. A couple things I want to point out, especially related to compatibility with the neighborhood. Orientation, height, and location of buildings in relation to character of the neighborhood, and the appearance and harmony of the building with adjacent development and surrounding landscape. I personally believe that's a pretty powerful criteria there. Compatibility of the use with other properties in the neighborhood, substantial detrimental effects of the use on the neighborhood, and city council would be the decision-maker here to review the proposed development and determine that compatibility. Also, the sufficiency of setbacks, screens, and buffers for the harmony with uses outside the development to control adverse impacts, that the land area is sufficient. So in my opinion, there's pretty significant standards for review here. If the subject property is owned industrial, there's some additional criteria here, which was taken from the comprehensive plan. One or more of the following characteristics must be for an extended period of time. It needs to be vacant or underutilized, either the land or the buildings, poor quality job creation in terms of pay, employee density, chronic competitive disadvantage in terms of location, conversion of residential use will not cause negative impacts on surrounding industrial, and the location and surrounding land use will not cause any adverse impacts to the health of future residents. So obviously, what we're trying to do here is provide an opportunity for some affordable housing development in industrial zoning districts, but also protect employment in those same industrial zoning districts. That's the balancing act that we're trying to deliver here. Okay, so there's obviously been a lot of public and committee input on this. The Development Review Commission reviewed the change to chapter 16, found that consistent with the comprehensive plan, voted six to one for approval. Community Planning and Preservation heard the change to the comprehensive plan, they found that consistent, five to zero for approval. Ford Pinellas notified us that they have found the proposed ordinance in 17.5 consistent with the countywide rules. There was public outreach done with the Chamber of Commerce and Kona. The Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter in support of the proposal. Kona submitted a letter directly to city council with some concerns related to potential adverse impacts on neighborhood character. There were multiple city council committee meetings on this, you can see those dates there. There was both a committee of the whole and then several meetings of HLUT. And the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee heard this and voted six to one in support, and they did have some additional recommendations, which we'll discuss on the next slides. So here are some suggested modifications that we heard along the way from city council and/or committees or public. Both from city council and AHAQ, there was a suggestion that the proximity requirement to a school in IS and IT be changed from half a mile to two miles. Staff would have no objection with this. If city council were to support the ordinance before you and would like that modification, we can do that for the next public hearing, we have no opposition to that. It would expand the potential properties, private properties in those zoning districts from 13 to 15, which is a modest increase. And these are the 15 properties that would be eligible based on the acreage and the proximity requirements for this new process. Okay, we also heard from the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, in their vote, they recommended that in the IS and IT zoning districts, that the minimum acreage and units be changed from five acres and 60 units respectively to one acre and 20 units respectively. The administration would not support this recommended change. This would be a significant increase in the number of industrial properties that would qualify, and could be a significant potential loss of employment generating industrial land. I'm sure many city council members will remember at one of the earlier committee meetings, we heard from the Economic Development Staff of the city of St. Petersburg, the Economic Development Staff of Pinellas County, and the Forward Pinellas staff, all had concerns about the loss of industrial land. We would be concerned that if we went forward with this recommended change and included these new properties into this potential process, that it could upset the balance that we've created with these stakeholders in support of this proposal. We also heard from Kona, they had multiple suggestions focused on additional criteria for neighborhood compatibility. Staff finds that the proposed ordinance and the review process already addresses compatibility with neighborhoods in the intent and purpose section, and also more specifically in the standards for review, I covered that earlier. They also asked that there be a committee meeting prior to the city council meeting, and staff finds that as permitted by state statute, that the city council is the body that should hear these applications, and that an additional committee meeting would not be necessary. Okay, so on item J-4, the one currently before you, we would recommend that city council conduct the first reading and the first public hearing, which we're doing now, approve the transmittal of the attached resolution to the outside agencies, and set the second reading and adoption public hearing for October 14th. On item E-4, which you'll hear next, for first reading, we would recommend that you conduct the first readings of the ordinances and set the second reading and adoption public hearing for October 14th. I thank you for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions I can. And Liz Abernathy is here as well to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gertis. Why don't we hear from the public next?
Mr. Chair, we have two speakers. I'm going to call them... Call them both, Joe Farrell and Frank, I believe it's Guerra.
I'm sorry.
For J-4. We have two cards. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Joe Farrell, 4590 Olmerton Road, here on behalf of the Pinellas Realtor Organization. Overall, I want to speak in favor of the ordinance today. I mean, it's no secret, our association cares very much about affordable housing, very much about property rights. This issue touches on both of those. This could get difficult for certain people, we understand why folks at Kona would have issues with it. But we've said this publicly before, that at some point, people are going to have to make uncomfortable decisions about where they want to build things if we ever want to get out of our affordability hole. At the end of the day, there's a lot of things we can do, there's a lot of things we need to do. Some will be more useful than others, but at the end of the day, we really need a, you know, supply issue fix. And we're never going to fix a whole way out of this, I believe, in the short term, near term, it's going to be a long-term situation. But if we are limiting the locations and the places that we can build things, we're limiting the amount of supply we can have in the future. Our association, for almost 30 years, has been tracking supply and demand of housing as it pertains to homeownership in Pinellas County and St. Petersburg. And over the last 30 years, we have not seen a year that has less homes for sale than 2021 has had. That was the same for 2020, for any year before that. And think about it, we have more physical structures than we've ever had in the city, and we have less structure for sale. We just need more stuff built. It needs to be done the right way. We completely agree with that, that there needs to be oversight on this. But this creates, we believe, a pretty fair process moving forward for both communities and for an overall crisis, we believe, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Frank Guerra.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Frank Guerra. Our property is at 441 33rd Street North. We're the developers of the Elements on Third project in the historic Kenwood District. Some of you are familiar with us, we've been working in the city for over 10 years. We wanted to come and give our input as a developer in this. We have had discussions with the city multiple times over the 10 years that we've been in development in the city, to try to get affordable units as a component of two different phases of our projects that we built. And in neither case could we get there on a framework that worked for both the developer and for the provision of the affordable units that the city wanted. So I commend the city and its leadership in taking up what it is today, because it's the first city that I know of in all of Florida that is reacting to proactively implement... Reacted to proactively implement, doesn't make sense, but it is being proactive in implementing the bill that was passed by the legislature to increase affordability, because we all recognize that that is a large problem that we have. But unless the business community works hand-in-hand with the government, it's not going to work. So we are very... We have a great deal of hope that this issue is being taken up, and that it's going to be implemented in a very detailed way. And Mr. Gertis, your presentation was very detailed, and I think all of that makes sense. However, in the context of what is it going to cause the greatest increase in the pool of affordable units, you have to ask yourself the question, what is actually going to get built? Because any requirement that a project be 100% affordable puts you in a very small bucket of finançability. That is what... We have apartment developers that are only exclusively affordable developers. We have projects that are exclusively 100% affordable. And what they all have in common is that they do not use the traditional methods of capitalization, either on the debt side or the equity side. They use government subsidies, they use low interest or no-interest rate loans, forgivable loans. The resources for these things are extremely limited, which is why you only see a handful of 100% affordable deals in any given city, and especially in this one. And we've been here for 10 years. And it just is not something that is incentivized. What would be a greater incentive is to tap in to the resources of the business community and the development community with ready access to deep sources of financing for projects that could be mixed in use in terms of market rate units together with affordable units. This is a model that has been incentivized with zoning benefits, additional benefits in different cities throughout Florida and the country, really. But in this particular chance, you have an opportunity to take something up in a brand-new framework that you're creating so that you can give maximum incentive to the development of projects that are actually going to really increase affordable units in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker and final speaker is Brian Onxt. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, thank you, Mr. Chair, Brian Onxt, 625 Court Street. Mr. Chair, members of the council, first, I want to thank you and commend you for your leadership, the leadership of your staff, particularly Councilmember Gabbard, Mr. Gertis, Ms. Abernathy. You are the first city in the state of Florida to implement the legislative power, the empowerment that the Florida Legislature so rarely grants cities, and so often, we see them abrogating home rule. In this case, they've given you extreme flexibility to address the housing crisis. And what better city than St. Petersburg, a leader across the state in so many issues, to take the lead on this issue. I have two property owners that I'm working with, both properties qualify under the geographic criteria, under the ordinance, that are very excited about working with you to avail themselves of that flexibility. We are absolutely in favor of passing this ordinance tonight and passing it on second reading as written, without any amendments. What we would like to ask you to do is consider this as a very good first step, but agreeing with the last speaker, to work with the administration and Mr. Gertis and the legal department to explore how you can amend this ordinance after it's passed through a second ordinance, to increase that flexibility, to address that middle income, that middle income. And we've been following this issue significantly, we've been looking at all the advisories put out by the Florida Housing Coalition. This is a PowerPoint presentation called "A Guidebook for Affordable Housing." It discusses this ordinance, and it says, "In practice, this allows affordable housing units to be developed in those zones without the need for a zoning change or comprehensive plan amendment. This provision can also be used as justification to provide density bonuses to affordable developments in the eligible zoning districts." And it talks about the primary purpose of inclusionary zoning is to increase the supply of affordable housing concurrently with the development of market rate housing. Another PowerPoint presentation, specifically from the Florida Housing Coalition, on the implementation of HB 1339, talks about it as a super waiver, a super waiver of any law to the contrary. And it specifically talks about ensuring development meets the public purpose and ten of the law, which includes number or percentage of required affordable units, which, again, in my mind, is a recognition by the Florida Housing Coalition that this bill is intended to also apply to mixed-income developments. Finally, this is Affordable Housing Initiatives Workshop, given to the Leon County Commission in May. Leon County staff writes, "The city could use this language, HB 1339, to encourage market rate developers to build affordable units. The city could offer the market rate developers that it will approve a project in a certain zoning classification without needing a rezoning in exchange for the production of a specific number of affordable units." We thank you and ask you to take up this issue in the legislature.
Thank you very much.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we'll close the public hearing and go to executive session. Councilmember Gabbard.
Thank you, Chair. And first of all, I just want to start by thanking you, Rob. When we had our last HOU meeting about this, we left it by saying, "Let's have an expedited process to put together our expedited process," and so here we are. So I want to applaud you for doing that work. And so here we are. So I want to applaud you for doing that work and getting us here today so quickly. I'm also shocked that I'm actually excited that we had a gift from Tallahassee in the 2020 session when it pertains to affordable housing, because lord knows, that doesn't happen very often. So I'm really happy that we are finally here. I'm proud of the city for being the first in the state to implement this. And I'm really excited to move this forward today to the next public hearing. But I do have a question about this idea that AHAQ has brought forward regarding the one acre in the industrial zones. I understand that you say you don't recommend that. I just kind of want to get into it just a little bit and understand, when you say in the PowerPoint, "It will be a significant increase in the number of parcels that would then be available," how significant are we talking?
When we ran the numbers, and I don't have the exact number on the top of my head, but it's approximately 90 properties.
It's 90 properties if it's one acre. And remind me how many it is?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay. So from 15 to 90. But ultimately, council has the ability to approve or not approve. Is there an ability to work into our approval process, kind of this weighted idea of how many we've been approving, what the impact of that is economically, whenever those projects come forward to us? If we went with the one acre? Because I am very open to the idea of the one acre. But like all of it, it's going to be a case-by-case scenario of what fits. So I guess for me, I'm not quite as afraid of going that far. You know what I mean? So can you give me some idea of the flexibility that we would have if a property came forward to us and we just determined, okay, it's been too much. We've done too many one acres. We can't do anymore in maybe a particular area?
So I appreciate your comments, and I think that we could work with the city attorney's office to build in flexibility, definitely, to try and track the number of properties maybe that are used. I think that's certainly possible. My biggest concern is that if we make a change like that, I think we're going to have to reach back out to the stakeholders. I'm not sure that the economic development team in our city would be supportive of that change. We'd have to have further discussion with the mayor. I'm not sure that I would be back here on October 14th. So I certainly understand, and council can have that discussion, and we can certainly do further research on that, but I would want you to understand that.
Well, it's not my intention to derail anything today. But it also feels a little watered down to take advantage of this, and it only applied to 15 parcels. You know what I mean? I mean, is there a happy medium somewhere of like two and a half acres? I mean, somewhere in the middle that we could meet, so it's not all the way to 90 parcels? But it's something, 15 just seems very limited to me.
Happy to have additional discussions, happy to look at alternatives besides the one-acre alternative. You know, I just will say that you'll remember that when the staff from Pinellas County Economic Development showed up and Ford Pinellas showed up, the direction that I received from this city council was to remove industrial altogether from this process. I worked to get the industrial back into this process. And if we want to make that type of change, there's going to have to be further discussions, and I'm not sure where it will end up. That's really, that's my honest answer. I think Ms. Abernathy wanted to make a comment as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Elizabeth Abernathy, Director of Planning and Development Services. One other thing, when you think about the size of one acre and putting it into an industrial area, you know, we're very concerned about buffers and separation of uses. And when you get to that size, now we're starting to, it's going to be a little tougher to figure, to find spots where this might fit and still have compatibility. So I think it's not just that it opens up more of the area. It's also, is that a size that can reasonably be designed to deal with buffering and compatibility with other surrounding industrial? But, you know, maybe a three-acre where you've got a little bit more room. It's just you're starting to get to a point, especially if you're trying to fit 20 or 24 units on an acre of, a little more concerned about compatibility.
That makes complete sense.
I just want to add that thought, too.
Yeah. And I guess for me, I mean, my preference is to not derail anything and move this forward. But I would love to hear from my colleagues what their thoughts are, because I just, I feel like there has to be someplace in the middle that gets us a little bit more kind of bang for the buck here with this work, but doesn't take us to a point where we have to go back in and start the process all over with the outreach and all of that. So I'd love to hear what everybody else thinks about that. And then as far as the comments that were made about the middle income and the mixed use, I just want to say that I do not disagree at all that there is a growing kind of hole in the housing ladder as it pertains to middle income. That is just the reality. My greatest fear for our city is that we do such great work up to 100%, let's say. And then we have all of this other private development that's happening in the high end. And we leave people in the middle out. And what ultimately ends up happening in 10, 15 years is we become a city of haves and have-nots, because there's nowhere for the middle income to be. That's my greatest fear. Now, I'm not going to derail this today to have that conversation, and I've already shared that privately. But what I will say is that I would like to explore ideas going forward, and I'll be glad to work with you all on that, that can really get us some good policy that addresses that middle income. But for today, I think we need to move forward with where we are. So I just wanted to let you all know that publicly. Okay? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Foster.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, staff, and to our speakers. You know, I was trying to remember. It feels like we've talked about it so much, it's kind of hard to remember which discussions happened and what places. But Liz, I feel like I do remember in some venue having some conversation around, I'm just going to qualify it as like environmental justice, right? That whenever we put affordable housing in industrial land that could have, you know, to your pleasure, this buffer issue. We have historically done that in our country, and it has later created issues around, you know, poor people not having good air quality and other things. So I believe we've had some of this acreage discussion. I do agree with Councilmember Gabbard, though, you know, maybe there's a place in the middle for us to look at. 15 seems slim. Mr. Gertis is right, though. The initial guidance was to take it out, and so this is a step in the right direction. But we're going to need every swath of land possible for affordable housing. So I think if we can get somewhere further, we pass what's before us today, I think that's a worthy conversation to have. You know, I, kind of unrelated to this, but I think it's related, and there may be some layering opportunities that I want to mention. Mr. Onst mentioned the super waiver, and HUD has been doing quite a few of these super waivers in other programs right now. And it reminded me that in the state of California, you know, I've been pushing for us to consider with ARPA funds, looking at models that have worked, that started with CARES dollars and move into permanent housing with ARPA dollars. And in some of those projects in California, they passed a state statute establishing that any project that received a financial award would be deemed consistent in conformity with any applicable local plan. And so that might be something that we look at, again, not tonight, but as we look at really utilizing everything we can with this particular opportunity and with ARPA funds coming down the line, this mega waiver idea is interesting to me, because, you know, in order to get affordable housing built, we're going to have to figure out some of that. So I just wanted to kind of mention that now, since it was in my head. And, you know, Frank is absolutely right that, you know, those tax credit deals are few and far between. And so, you know, maybe there's some opportunity to look at using our ARPA funds to create some flexibility around that. So I support where we're at today, but I think there's more conversation to be had for us to really move this forward in a way that gets us to where we need to go.
Thank you. Councilmember Blackburn.
Thank you, Chair. I'm glad I spoke third, because, you know, very insightful comments from my colleagues. You know, as Mr. Gertis pointed out, there was pushback from council when we discussed this. I don't remember if there was a vote or not, but I remember that I was certainly one of the people who was pushing back. And that was because of my inherent desire and the need, I think I see, for jobs. And I was worried that, you know, housing would be competing with jobs. But the more I've thought about this and done outreach with the community, I think it's kind of come to be obvious to me that some of these sites are more aspirational moving forward than they are practical. And you're just never going to have that kind of industrial-level return across the board that we saw in the past. That being said, the speakers who spoke about the idea of affordable housing with mixed-use communities appeals to me for that exact reason that I was against this originally, because, you know, so often we have urban planning, and we want, especially in the downtown core, we want that mixed usage, because we want to activate things. But also, when we talk about affordable housing, we want our housing near corridors that have access to groceries, access to essential services, doctors, dentists, all of that. And a mixed opportunity, mixed use, really appeals to me. I also don't want to leave any stone unturned in the process, because we want to say that we did all we could for affordable housing. This council's been, you know, very, very progressive, I think, on the aspect of affordable housing. And we want to keep doing that. That being said, I wanted to ask you, I do not want to at all stand in the way of what's happening today. I'm in agreement with it. I'm going to vote yes. What would be next steps and processes to at least look at implementation of something like what was discussed by the speakers?
I'll let Rob jump in here, too, in a minute. But if I can quickly say, as a reminder, you know, we did increase all of the bonuses for workforce housing in all of the districts. So that opportunity is there. And in many districts, it went from six to eight, or 10, even 12, extra units per acre for the workforce housing. So we have that bonus in place in areas that allow residential now. And I'll let Rob speak to other opportunities, because one of our earlier discussions was, you know, couldn't this, could this be used where, let's say, your density is 15 units per acre, but you wanted to do another 15 as work, as affordable? So you had a 50-50. So your underlying zoning allows one, and you do up to that. And then you do above that under this provision of the code. And we talked about whether that was something we would want to consider. But we thought we needed to start where we are now, because that gets kind of complicated and, you know, potentially messy, and see how this would go, and then maybe look at that. But again, in those other areas, and we're already talking about potential upzoning on our corridors as part of our 2050 and our comp plan. So we have a whole nother avenue that we're approaching for density and bonuses through the comp plan, through the land development code, rather than this, you know, bypass, which is an excellent, you know, opportunity to do these affordable housing projects. So I think I would rather focus on how to get to some of those things through those other methods under our comp plan, under our zoning, rather than this bypass of that, which is what this is. So.
Thanks, Liz. Liz makes excellent points, and I just want to thank the speakers as well and certainly do understand where the speakers are coming from. I think city council will remember how excited we were to bring forward the area development on 54th Avenue and 4th Street, which was a mixed-income development. And we talked about how important that is to us as well. The mayor is a significant supporter of mixed-income development. In this particular case, when we're talking about an industrial zoning district that currently does not permit residential units at all, we just feel that the way the statute is constructed, it really does not leave room for us legally to do a mixed-income development on an industrial property. What Liz is referencing is if you have a commercial zoning district that already allows multifamily development, and you wanted to use this process to go over the maximum density to add affordable units, you could do that. But that would be in a zoning district where multifamily is already permitted. In industrial, the way it's written right now, again, we don't feel like that is potentially legal at this point. So we would need to do further research on that. It also may become an issue of lobbying, frankly. You know, if the state statute was modified to clearly indicate that the definition of affordability in that particular statute meant 30% affordable units, then that would be something we'd certainly be open to discussing. We're open to the idea of mixed income. We just feel under the current statute, it's not possible in industrial.
Okay. Thank you for that, for both answers. You know, as far as, I understand certainly what you're saying. As far as, you know, anything affordable, speed is important, because the quicker we can do it. So that is why, you know, the bypass, it is opportunistic. But certainly what you're saying about legalities is very concerning to me. I don't want to go to jail. I like my freedom. So I guess my questions would be, you know, we see sessions obviously coming up here. What would be the next steps for anything? Would you, I guess, report back to council? Will we talk offline, committee? What do you think we should do here?
Yeah, absolutely. And I can, you know, bring this to the legislative folks that we have here at the city on our side. I know Councilmember Gabbard's done a tremendous job as chair of the lair and may pick this item up as well, and so we can look at it through those lens.
I'll talk offline to you about a new business item, and we'll go from there. Again, thank you very much. And, you know, you never know. People might surprise you. Like I said, my viewpoint has been swayed by considering some things. So thank you very much.
Vice Chair, Driscoll.
Thank you. Can we talk a little bit more about the concerns that were raised by Kona and the recommendations that they made? I understand that we don't, why we would not have a committee prior to going to city council, so I don't need to talk about that. I'm more interested in the concerns that they have around the... They talk about needing like a stronger definition of neighborhood character and preserving that. And I can understand why that's important to them. What kinds of, like, what can you say to make them feel good about this?
Well, the first thing I'll say, councilmembers, that I certainly understand and appreciate Kona's concerns as well and certainly don't want to do anything to significantly disrupt the neighborhood character in any neighborhood in the city of St. Petersburg. I do feel very strongly that the criteria is very powerful and gives city council the ability to look at a development and truly decide whether it fits in with the character of the neighborhood and is compatible or not. And, you know, I don't know, you know, Liz may have a little different perspective on this. My thoughts on this are a little counterintuitive, maybe, but I'll share them with you. One of the things I've seen in the past is that when you have a development and you have certain objective criteria, whether that's a density cap, or an FAR, or an ISR, and you start to put in all this criteria. And then you also have this compatibility criteria. And the developer's going to say, "Well, if I meet your objective criteria, if I meet your FAR, if I meet your height limit, then I'm compatible." And I've seen that be a difficult situation for city council. So I personally don't think that's the appropriate way to do this. The appropriate way for me to do this is to trust city council, to use the power of that criteria to make a decision on whether this is the right development in the right place. And I really trust city council to do that. And I think the standards for review give you every opportunity to do that. And I'm comfortable with this proposal, and I think that city council will protect neighborhoods. I do.
Okay. And one of the standards for review, number eight, is substantial detrimental effects of the use, including evaluating the impacts of the use and a concentration of similar or the same uses in structures on the neighborhood. or the same uses and structures on the neighborhood. The way I read that is, no one has to worry about their neighborhood suddenly being dominated by apartment complexes.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
So, I mean, this, that's just one example of what I think is pretty clear, that we're protecting the neighborhood character, right? And then, of course, the one above that, number seven, the compatibility with the existing natural environment and with properties in the neighborhood. And that comes to us also, my understanding is if anything at all changes, it has to come back to us, right?
That is correct.
So we have a pretty tight...
And I think number six is all about the site plan, and that's...
Yes.
Where you're talking about orientation, height, location of buildings, the character of the neighborhood, the appearance. That's the site plan, that's the elevations, that's the, where's the parking going, how's the layout, you know, how does the height fit in with the adjacent properties? So number six, I think, is the most powerful that speaks to that site plan, because you're going to have a site plan, you're going to have elevations, and we can put conditions. We can put, you know, extra trees, landscaping, anything that we feel that would help with any kind of concerns or compatibility that we might hear. And we're going to follow the same type of notice process where the, we're going to notify the neighborhood associations and the neighbors and give them the opportunity to provide us feedback, so that when we bring this to you, we can craft conditions that are appropriate for that specific site and that specific project. I think that's the beauty of this, because it's site-specific, it's project-specific. If that project goes away, the approval goes away. It doesn't carry with the land, it doesn't, you know, go to somebody else. It's that project, and that's what, you know, that's what I appreciate about this, because, again, on its face, why would a planner be supportive of something that doesn't follow zoning in the comp plan? Well, that's why, because we can make it...
Right.
Very particular to a project, and make sure that we can deal with any of those issues and concerns.
Yeah. And, you know, considering that this is just one prong of a multi-pronged approach that we're taking to increase our housing stock and to increase the availability of affordable housing, this is, this is really a great step forward. It is. And it's, it could be bolder, yes, but maybe we start with this and see how it goes and go from there. I'm wondering if you were going to be providing Kona with that, the map that they requested of the one-acre vacant, I mean, it changes all the time, and I'm not, I'm not sure that it will even still be current by the time you hand it to them, because things are changing so fast, but they did request it, and...
I did send them that map today.
Oh, great.
And I also did send a copy to city council. I hope you received it.
Okay. I have, not yet, but I look forward to looking for it. Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. I look forward to voting yes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I, too, wanted to thank both of you, Rob and Liz, for your work, and I know it's been, for people that don't pay attention to government, this is government working fast on something, and we've come a long way, and my, my feeling on this is I don't want to mess with success. We've got, we've gotten it this close, let's go ahead and get this done, and we can, we can deal with some other, some of these other issues forward. I also wanted to thank our speakers for coming in and giving us the, some perspective, because we need that, and you gave us some, some good ideas to think about. I, I know Councilmember Gabbard has probably already taken a note, she's got a new lair topic on...
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I just know how you think and how your mind, mind works, so. So the discussion that we, that we've had today, I think, has been a very healthy discussion. I don't want to repeat things that my colleagues have said. I, too, want to be sensitive to Kona and their concerns. They bring up some valid points. I thought the letter that they, they wrote us gave us some very good perspective, and I always want to protect our neighborhoods, but it's a balancing act. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to solve this affordable housing problem, and we want to protect our neighborhoods. And this tool that the legislature gave us, and it is, it is amazing that we have this tool and that we've reacted so quickly to implement it. So I want to take this step, get this thing approved now, and then there's other steps that we can take going forward. So I'm looking forward to voting yes on, on these items, on this topic, and thank you all for what you've done.
Thank you, Chair. If I might, just to communicate with city council based on the discussion tonight, there were many follow-up items, some of them are more longer-term, but for the October 14th public hearing, I do intend to make the change to the proximity to schools to two miles. I heard no objection to that, so I am going to make that change. We will also have internal discussions with economic development related to the industrial land size and to see what their feeling is there, and we'll report that back.
Okay. Very good. And Liz, I understand you're going to Kona in a week or so?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
So we'll be having lots of discussions about compatibility and neighborhood character in the context of our 2050 implementation, and, and I do understand their perspective, because it's a little scary to think about doing a process that's outside of our comp plan and our, and our zoning. So, you know, it's different, and, but I think we're all really comfortable with the way we have set this up, that it gives us the criteria we need to deal with those concerns, and, and it's an ordinance we feel like we can legally defend, you know, it's, that we can move forward with, because we're going to be the first ones. So, you know, we don't have anybody else to look to, to see how things are going and what's working and what isn't, and I think we're all really comfortable with the way that we have, you know, set this process up and are excited about moving forward with it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Well, council members, we have a ordinance before us and a resolution. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 481-H.
Move approval.
Mr. Chair, did you want to have one motion for both A and B?
Yes.
Can we do both?
You can.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Clerk, please open the machine for voting. Council members, please cast your votes. Seeing all council members have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, the motion to approve is in the item J4A and B passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go next to E4.
Chair, if you want to indulge me for just a moment...
Oh, go right ahead.
...we have time to share the award that we got last week at American Planning Association for our 2050 plan, and an award of excellence, recognizing the work that we have done and we'll, we'll continue to do. So a little bit of self-advertising, but thank you to everybody that participated in that, and I just wanted to share this with everyone, and maybe I'll put it on the table outside to share with the public for a bit, so if that is acceptable to everybody. But just wanted to share the good news, since this was kind of timely, along with our discussion here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well done. Council will go next to E4. Will the clerk please read the titles?
Ordinance number 486-H. An ordinance of the city of St. Petersburg, Florida, amending Chapter 16 of the city code, amending Section 16.01.040 to preclude application of the land development regulation to certain affordable housing projects pursuant, approved pursuant to Section 166.041516 Florida statutes, provided for an effective date. The public hearing is scheduled for October the 14th. Ordinance number 485-H. An ordinance of the city of St. Petersburg, Florida, amending Chapter 17.5 of the city code related to housing assistance, creating a process pursuant to Section 166.041516 Florida statutes, wherein the Petersburg City Council may approve the development of housing that is affordable in designated zoning categories, subject to procedural and site compatibility requirements, provided for severability, and provided for an effective date. This also is public hearing is scheduled for the 14th of October.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second?
You can vote on both of these at the same time.
Okay. Is that good with you, Councilmember Figgs Sanders?
Yes, Chair.
All right. And...
Yes.
Councilmember Gabbard? So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve both ordinances before us. Will the clerk please open the machine for voting? Council members, please cast your vote. Seeing all present council members have voted, will the clerk please tally and announce the vote?
Mr. Chair, the motion to approve is in the items E4A and B passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll go next to open forum.
With Councilmember Rice being absent, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Go next to open forum. Do we have any speakers for open forum?
No speakers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll close open forum and go to announcements. Anybody?
No, sir.
On Saturday, it's the 20th anniversary of 9/11, and for, for our whole country, it's a very, very moving day for me personally. In my former business, it's always a very, a very difficult day, so our thoughts and our prayers are with our nation as we, we mark the anniversary of the terrorist attacks that happened 20 years ago on, on Saturday. Anybody else? Great work today, everyone. City council is adjourned.